All righty, I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the May 8th Urban Experience Meeting. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
So move approval of the minutes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No? No, this is a boring one. All right. First on the discussion items is the time extension for the Boca interim zoning ordinance. And we already have two council sponsors for that. Just wanted to confirm that is Councilmember Bullock and Kath Cart.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, councilmembers, council presidents. Great to see you. This one is fairly straightforward. What we would like to ask is that we get in, that we extend the life of Boca. It is currently set to expire, I believe, July 18th. This would allow us an additional five months to complete the work that's already underway and, and working its way through the system to be the permanent replacement to Boca. So building opportunity and choices for all is the interim ordinance that allowed up to four units on any residential property, made some changes to centers and corridors as well to help with residential development. This would, this is a simple change that would simply change the expiration date from July 18th to December 18th. It wouldn't change anything to do with the permanent replacement that's underway. This is just to keep Boca in place while we finish our work on the, on the replacement.
All right. Any questions? Councilmember, can you?
Don't you have to incorporate the legislature's changes?
To which, are you, are you responding to the, the laws passed this year?
Yes.
So specifically HB 1110 is the one that's the missing middle or the middle housing bill. We have until the next comprehensive plan update in 2026 to adopt that.
Okay.
However, the replacement to Boca, building opportunity for housing is going to do a lot of that.
Okay.
It won't be everything necessarily that's in 1110, but we do have time.
Okay, thank you.
And I was just going to say, and when do we expect the consultant report back in this window of time?
So the, it's, it's a, for the replacement, right? Yeah. So the, the comprehensive plan stuff, the comprehensive plan changes that we're proposing as part of that are coming to Plan Commission soon, probably in June, and then they'll come to you in July. But during this time, the consultant is, and our team is working on the code amendments that we hope to have some substantive pieces for you probably late summer. Ultimately, the goal, the ultimate goal is to get it all before, before you and heard and decided before the end of December.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, December 18th seems like an odd day for me. It's not like the beginning of a month, the end of a month. Why December 18th?
I believe that's either close to or your last council meeting for the year.
Gotcha.
So that way it's just an extra nod to, we got to get this done before you all go home for Christmas and next year happens.
Sounds good.
Some of us forever.
Oh! From this dais.
I was just going to ask.
It's, it's weighted over there, too. It feels like.
You might want to stop while you're here.
Be very afraid.
I was just going to ask if he could change our expiration date.
All right, thank you. Any more questions on this? Otherwise, I think you're standing up here to talk about the West Quadrant TIF.
Yeah, one, one second here, just because this one's got numbers and I'm prone to get them wrong, so give me just a second.
I'm sure their chairs are better on that side.
Okay, so this, this second item is relating to a request that we received last year from Habitat for Humanity for the use of West Quadrant TIF funding. Essentially, Habitat would like to request up to $500,000 to reimburse them for the purchase costs of houses in West Central in the TIF district that they will then be using to renovate. They will, once they purchase them, they will renovate them and set them up as permanently affordable housing under RCW 3689, or 3989, almost got the number right. Essentially, the, this is, this would be the first opportunity for the TIF to fund permanently affordable housing based on the state law changes last year or the year before that allows TIFs to fund this type of housing, which, two years ago, thank you, Council President, which means a permanently affordable house or home would be one that is deed restricted, protected for 25 years if it's for purchase, or 40 years if it's for rent. And what they define affordable is affordable for someone who makes 80% of the area median income. The area that this could potentially affect, at least the homes could be purchased from the portion of the TIF that lies within the West Central neighborhood. That text is really tiny, but if I made it any bigger, you couldn't see the streets anymore. Essentially, what you're looking at is the portions of West Central from Kendall Yards, so not including Kendall Yards, but from the northern limit of Kendall Yards north to Boone, and it also includes the Maxwell Employment Center, which is that kind of plus-shaped, shaped near the top, and some properties on the west side of Monroe, although since there's not very many homes in there, if any, it likely wouldn't affect Monroe. The idea is to establish a program by which Habitat would purchase a home, they would deed restrict it according to the state standards, they would then apply for repayment, at which point the program administrator, which would be me at the beginning, will ensure that it meets requirements and then it will come in to you, I believe, as a repayment agreement to, to fund the repayment. The resolution, the draft resolution is in your briefing paper. It's, it's currently includes a maximum expenditure of half a million from the West Quadrant TIF project areas. The only authorized provider now is Habitat for Humanity. However, in the future, if an additional provider were to come forward and be interested, they could certainly propose that they be added to the program, would require that the Neighborhood Project Advisory Committee have a meeting on it, make a recommendation, then it would come to you. The same is true of the amount, if in the future, if this was wildly successful, and we hope it is, and, and the council would like to spend, or to increase the maximum amount to allow more homes to be purchased for this, that again would be a simple, a simple matter of coming before the NPAC and then bringing it back to you as a resolution. Just to give you some background, because we are talking about money here, this is the latest increment curve for the West Quadrant TIF project areas. As you can see here, you know, in 2018, the, the fund itself was, was generating about $190,000 each year to the, to the city for these projects. We're currently, for this year, for 2023, we're expecting 573,000. So they help, the, the fund itself is doing rather well, continuing an upward curve of value and revenue, which is a good sign. And then there's currently, as of May 8th, there is a little over one and a half million dollars in the fund. You have approved certain expenditures, including the West Central Infrastructure Project for 300,000, Ash and Dean for 100, for that conversion for 180. If approved, Habitat would add another 500,000 to that encumbrance, which leaves us even just right today would leave us another half a million in the fund for additional projects. That does not include the, most of the amount we expect to receive in 2023. So this is, this is a fund that renews itself pretty quickly, at least at this point. And at that point, I'd, I'd love to take questions, otherwise the resolution's in your packet.
All right, questions? Councilmember Cath Cart.
Just wondering how many units or homes that the 500,000 would, would acquire?
It's a good question. It's going to depend on, on the ultimate purchase price and also Habitat, we aren't their only funding source for this, so they will balance their other sources and decide for each home, we want this much or this much, so it's, it's almost impossible to say.
Okay.
Our hope is that it's several, but other than that, can't be more specific.
Thanks.
Councilmember Bingle?
This is my question.
Oh, Council President Beggs.
I have a couple of questions, but first, you got into the crossfire in this several years ago when neighborhoods started saying, hey, we're, we passed this thing a long time ago, we're not getting any benefits, partly because there wasn't much money, and then the money came and it got spent in Riverfront Park, and people were very grumpy, and we've, you know, we reinvigorated that review process. So I'm just curious what the discussion, because I've heard so many requests from that neighborhood for more, more kind of street projects. I love this idea. I wrote the law that was passed two years ago in 2012. It took me till 2021 to get it passed, so I'm really glad to, I'm super excited about it, but I just want to know a little more commentary, because I don't want to then, as soon as we approve this, hear from a bunch of people saying, oh my gosh, we thought the money should be spent this way. So can you give us some background on that?
Absolutely. Yeah, happily. So the Neighborhood Projects Advisory Committee met on this topic multiple months. It was not a rapid discussion, it was not, it was not an emergency discussion. They, they really considered a lot of different angles on this, and one of them was they did ask Habitat, and Habitat is working with a Better Way and with the charitable arm of Greenstone as well, and they asked them to do some significant outreach. They did present the, a proposal to the West Central Neighborhood Council. The West Central Neighborhood Council ultimately voted to support the proposal and also reach West Central, which is not affiliated with the neighborhood, but is a similar, I would say, neighborhood booster and a, and an economic development organization. They likewise recommended that the NPAC vote for this. Ultimately, there was quite a lot of discussion, but there was also a lot of engagement and a lot of discussion with the neighborhood and with other stakeholders. And I didn't mention it specifically, but the, the committee did vote four to one to recommend this. I believe that's in your briefing paper.
Great, all right. That eases my mind, that's exciting, everyone's come together. Secondly, it's not related to this exactly, but you're the person to ask. So there is the division of the TIF boundaries between the Kendall Yards.
Correct.
And Kendall Yards is where the big money comes in, and that's going to pay back for improvements that were already made. This idea of housing, not purchasing old houses and rehabilitating, but building multifamily housing or condos or something like that in the Kendall Yards, what, what's your estimate of when the money is going to finish paying off the Kendall Yards improvements? And there might be some delta for affordable housing within Kendall Yards?
I would, I would have to go back and we'd have to do some thinking to tell you specifically, like, what year we anticipate, but I will say that Kendall Yards is continuing to develop and continuing to build public improvements and then requesting refund or reimbursement from the TIF. In fact, we're working on a request right now that, that you'll hear about in the future once they've built it. So Kendall Yards isn't done, per se. The way that you amended the ordinance, council amended the ordinance a few years ago, it's, it's really at 2032 that that Kendall Yards increment becomes available for things like affordable housing in, and I'm not sure how it would relate to the actual Kendall Yards development area, assuming it's full at that point.
Could, could you look at that again? Because I know we entered into certain contractual agreements with the developers of Kendall Yards.
Yep.
But I'm just wondering whether or not those funds, really whether we could do something without breaching our agreements that we have, so that we grow some affordable housing in that neighborhood?
Yeah, I can look into it. It, it comes down, I think, to the, some of the, the distinct language that's in the ordinance, and you've seen that ordinance.
I know.
It's, it's a volume.
But we could, but we could change the ordinance, I guess is my question. That's what I'm looking, can you see what we can do?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look and see if there's any opportunities and, and get back to you.
So along those lines, I can't picture affordable housing in Kendall Yards. So was there ever a discussion, a real discussion about affordable housing in Kendall Yards? Or was it just, let's appease the planners and the council members and talk about, maybe we'll do this?
I, well.
Was it a serious discussion?
I don't, I, I'm not aware of where it might have lied in the discussion of the ordinance itself and what that, but of course, the original ordinance didn't envision it.
But the law didn't exist at the time.
That's what I was gonna, yeah. So that, that opportunity didn't exist when the ordinance was envisioned.
Right.
I don't believe that, and I might be, I have to look at it again, I don't believe the last amendment to the ordinance addressed Kendall Yards in any fashion, other than to say, once Kendall Yards was done at 2032, that we wouldn't continue to allocate Kendall Yards money to Kendall Yards' area.
Is that an HOA?
I do not know, that's a good question.
Because doesn't, are HOAs exempt from that?
From, from what part?
From, including affordable housing.
Well, this isn't a requirement, this is an opportunity. So I, I imagine HOA or not, depending on their, their rules, whether they could, say, decide to build affordable housing, I don't know.
So I'm confused now. The part of the TIF that hasn't been signed yet, that we go back and forth on and talk about?
With the county?
With the county.
Okay.
Isn't that the piece where Kendall Yards extends out 10 years when they're done and then it goes to the West Central?
So.
That TIF money would go to West Central?
Well, it would go to the project areas, which includes
Right.
parts of West Central, parts of Emerson Garfield, and parts of Riverside.
Okay.
I, I, again, I'm working from memory here. I believe it said something to the effect of the Kendall Yards funding would be used in the project areas, which would exclude Kendall Yards.
Right.
And so what county, what the county has not ratified yet is extending it past 2032, the whole TIF, and then allocating Kendall Yards funds to the project, to the neighborhood projects. They haven't signed it, but as far as our ordinance says, that's, that's what we're doing.
And it could be used for affordable housing? It could be used for?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because the, the amendments last time took the projects in the non-Kendall Yards area.
Right.
The project, the neighborhood projects area, and added affordable housing as one of the possible expenditures. That's why this can come forward, otherwise we would have to say, sorry.
Okay, I just want to make sure my brain's right.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions?
Thanks for your work on this.
This says that it's scheduled for action on the 29th, the council doesn't meet on the 29th.
Every time, I, I miss canceled, canceled meetings every time. It can go a week later, it won't, it won't injure the, the effectiveness of this.
Thank you. And then Councilmember Stratton and I are the sponsors on that one.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda is bicycle parking code update. And for this, we have council sponsors, Council President Beggs in.
All right, thank you, councilmembers, Council President Tyler Kimbrel with Planning Services. I met with you in December of last year now to talk about this briefly as an introductory presentation, and I'm here again following the Plan Commission's recommendations and hearing. Just a quick overview of the public process, like I said, we started, we kicked this off in December at Urban Experience. From then, we've had multiple meetings with Public Advisory Committee, Technical Advisory Committee, different groups, and then Plan Commission on April 12th had a unanimous vote for recommendation that is in your packet. And now here we sit at, May 8th at Urban Experience with impending council action on June 5th, accounting for the, the holiday in between there. You saw this presentation last time, but as a quick refresher, why are we updating the bicycle parking requirements? Basically, the Bicycle Master Plan and the Comprehensive Plan both outline the need for more bicycle parking throughout the city. We also would like to leverage the city's investment infrastructure, including the new bike lanes and Centennial Trail and the copious amount of trails that we have across the city. We also are developing a number of plans for transit-oriented development, and those really rely on a good multimodal infrastructure network to, to support the densities in those plans. So quickly, the Bicycle Master Plan outlines the need for short-term and long-term bicycle parking, and I'll get into the differentiation between those two here shortly. We're also target, targeting, targeting interested but concerned ridership. Those are those who would otherwise, otherwise ride their bike if there were good infrastructure, including bicycle parking, so that means bike lanes, parking, safe facilities for people to ride. It also says that we need to increase the availability throughout the city, so although most trips maybe end downtown, we should really strive to make the whole city a bicycle-friendly city. So quickly, an overview of what's short-term and what's long-term. The short-term bicycle parking are your sidewalk bicycle racks, inverted U racks is here on most, or most sidewalks in the downtown, they're oriented towards visitors and customers. And then the long-term bicycle parking are secured bike lockers, enclosures, rooms oriented towards employees and residents of, of a building, and they can include vertical and horizontal racks. So the Comprehensive Plan also outlines the need for more bicycle parking, stating that onsite development of bicycle parking is needed and that there's that differentiation between short-term and long-term with the current plan as well. It also states that we need to develop a system for reducing onsite vehicle parking requirements, and this is where the vehicle parking substitution rate comes into play, allowing bicycle parking to substitute for vehicle parking. So a quick look of what the code is now and what its potential as recommended is, is bicycle parking now is directly correlated with vehicle parking, so if you have 100 bicycle park, or sorry, 100 vehicle parking spots, 5% of that is required as bicycle parking, so five, five spots. There's no differentiation between short-term and long-term, and there's no design guidance. So as recommended, there are clear requirements. We uncouple bicycle parking from vehicle parking and base it solely on the square footage of the building. We differentiate between that short-term and the long-term. Updated incentives, so previously you could substitute up to 10% of vehicle parking with bicycle parking. It was recommended that we up that, so as written in the draft recommendation from Plan Commission, it bumped it up to 25%. And then there's better guidance on what constitutes bicycle parking. A lot of bicycle parking that businesses and government agencies implement are really conducive to damaging the bicycle and not really securing it and making it more available for theft. To give you a quick example of the recommended draft code, given City Hall, approximately 350 employees in this building, 13 of those employees regularly bicycle, so it's about 3%, and that's only those who responded to the survey, so there could be more when it's a nice day like today. This building would require 16 long-term bicycle parking spaces and eight short-term. So public involvement and feedback, again, like I said, we had a Public Advisory Committee look at this and tell us where we got it right, where we got it wrong, how we could dial this in to better suit the needs of Spokane. We also hosted a virtual open house. We had a decent attendance, 6:00 PM on a, on Wednesday night, about a dozen or so people showed up. We also did a public survey that ran from February 15th to March 15th, and we got about 260 responses from that, and I'll go over the results of that here in the next slides. One of the questions is where would you park your bicycle at your workplace? And these are ranked choice, so you pick your favorite at one and your least favorite at five. The number one answer was in a ground-floor secure bike room accessible by a door sidewalk, and the number two being a secure bike room or cage in the auto, auto parking area. And you could see 41% of the respondents selected that the in-ground, in a ground-floor secure bike room. Same question for your workplace, or sorry, the previous one was your workplace, this is your residence. 32 respondents said that in a ground-floor secure bike room accessible by a door from the sidewalk or street was, was the preferred location. Then we asked generally, what is your agreement for the standards of long-term bicycle parking? And we had 72% say agree or strongly agree.
With what?
Sorry?
With what? They agreed or strongly agreed with what?
The long-term bicycle parking requirements.
Yeah.
We also asked, you know, what's your level of ridership? Again, we are targeting those interested but concerned, so this just gives us a detail of who's responding to the survey. 45% say they're enthused or confident in their, in their bicycle riding, which just means that you'll probably find them on, you know, busier streets, but they're not riding down Division, whereas the strong and fearless are riding down Division. Interested, concerned, again, they're riding on a long Centennial where it's safe, and they would ride their bike more often if we had better facilities across the city. And 5% know way, know how, they would never ride a bike. And that's what I have for you today. In your packet is the Plan Commission recommendations, staff reports, and draft ordinance. Any questions?
Questions, yeah.
Yeah. So, okay, so sticking with the City Hall example, you mentioned a building this size would require 16 permanent, eight short-term, which is the equivalent of four racks. So I'm just kind of curious if, if we were going to do, and I know this isn't a retroactive policy, but if we were going to do that, how much space, is there a recommended square footage or a required size that that has to be? What, what would that be under the code, the proposed code?
Yes, so a typical bike takes up approximately, I'm blanking on it, it's, it's about 10 times less than the average car parking spot, so about, I think it's 20 square-ish feet.
Okay.
And so a bike, times, times 16, 20, times 6, 220. and twenty.
Right.
Square feet-ish, roughly.
So probably a good corner of the first floor of City Hall, so to speak, where the Ombudsman's Office size.
For instance, now, I believe we have six racks on the patio on the second floor with the vertical racks that are covered, and those would count towards your long-term bicycle parking.
Okay.
So basically triple that amount of space.
And then what, how do we define, or I guess what's considered secure? When you say secure park, or secure bicycle parking?
Yeah, behind a, a lock with a key code, a key accessible by the residents. It would be anticipated that the property manager would either give out the keys or the code at the time.
Okay. So not necessarily that each individual bike is secured, but that the room itself is secure?
Correct. And the bicycle rack does need to be able to secure the bicycle as well.
Okay.
So if in those vertical, there would have to be kind of a hook that allowed a U-lock or a chain lock to connect to the bicycle and the rack.
Okay. And then my third question would be just what, what has been, and I understand the feedback from the public, but the actual folks doing the development, the building, the construction, what have they said? You know, is there any cost that they would foresee this would add? Are there any, any modifications to current existing codes that they would request to give them? You know, if they're going to lose two hundred and fifty square feet to this, maybe they can gain that somewhere else in the development? I'm just kind of curious what that feedback has been.
Yeah. So we did a few revisions when talking to developers and institutional development managers, et cetera. One was we allowed garages to count.
Okay.
In apartment buildings. So if you have a garage, that counts one-to-one for long-term bicycle parking. We also increased some of the, and by increase, I mean, we reduced the amount of parking requirements for some developments and, and had minimum thresholds established for different use types. We also, Plan, Plan Commission recommended to allow, and sorry, this might come out confusing, with the twenty-five percent vehicle parking substitution, they substituted to allow bicycle, your, your minimum bicycle parking to count towards your vehicle parking substitution, if that makes sense.
Sure.
So previously, it was on top of the minimum bicycle parking requirement that you were allowed to substitute the vehicle parking. Now it's all bicycle parking can substitute.
Instead of a hundred, you'd have seventy-five or something instead, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So yes, we have made some, some more refinements to, to appease in understanding of the cost of development.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so when we're talking about developers specifically, this is a way that they can actually reduce costs in some ways, right? Because then they don't have to have as much vehicle parking because they can substitute it for bicycle parking instead, correct?
That's, that was the intent, yes.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
I have one more. So on the secure storage, I thought we had talked at one point in the secure storage for the, for the bikes was going to have to be like its own separate contained unit that was, that had its own requirements. Did that change?
No. So it's still for, we'll take the residential use case scenario. They're not allowed to count in-unit bicycle parking storage because basically it'd be impossible to regulate in-unit storage of bicycles. So it was most likely going to have to be, again, in a ground-floor area room or in an external storage structure, again, accessible by locker or keypad. Does that answer your question?
I, I, I might just be misremembering, but I thought it was going to have to be its own separate thing with, you know, coverage requirements and, you know, what the walls were made out of. Maybe I'm misremembering that. Like, it couldn't be just chain link because somebody could cut through or whatever. I thought it had to be something.
Yeah. I, I mean, it has to, it can be a separate structure. It's not required to be a separate structure. It can be in, in the building itself. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got one more. What, in terms of the, the, what is the size of the envelope of the building that this would apply to? So is it just multifamily of a certain size, like department stores of a certain size? What's the minimum?
Yeah. So for, as recommended, it only applies to residential units once they breach a ten-unit threshold.
Okay.
And then the requirement is point-five racks per unit, so one for every two units. And then it varies among use type, I think between ten thousand and four, one per ten thousand square feet, for example, up to, I can't remember off the top of my, fourteen thousand, depending if it's office or commercial or what have you.
And so if it's, and it has to be for, for, for a ten-unit development, it would have to be an indoor secured storage, correct?
Yeah. I mean, it could be exterior to the main structure, but it does have to be covered for, and weather-protected and secured, yes.
But effectively, what we're saying is if you're doing, say, a planned unit development of ten units or more, you're going to have to build a separate building just for bikes. Is that correct?
For residential use is most likely because we're not allowing the in-unit storage. But if it's a building such as the Boxcar Apartments on Fifty North Grant, their bicycle parking area is within the main structure.
Yeah. No, it's fantastic. I've, I've visited. It's, it's a great, great thing. But they voluntarily did that on their own, too.
Correct.
So something others could also do.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is a process for addressing city-owned property, and that is briefed by Alex.
All right. Good afternoon, council. So I am here to introduce the ordinance establishing a process to consider and act upon the community members' concerns regarding city-owned property and adopting a new chapter to Title eighteen, Human Rights. On January fifth of this year, the Spokane Human Rights Commission passed a resolution proposing a standard protocol for this process. So this chapter details and defines the process for receiving, researching, reviewing, and recommending action to address community concerns regarding institutional statements, names, or monuments on the property owned by the city of Spokane. So today, I just wanted to give you kind of a high-level flow chart of what this process could look like, or what we're proposing the process would look like. So the Human Rights Commission would receive the concern from the, either community member or group. They would then assign it to their Civic Impact Working Group to make the initial review, to review the request and determine whether or not to start the review, considering whether the content described in the request is discriminatory under Municipal Code eighteen or the contents is likely to trigger mental pain, suffering, or disrespect in a reason, in a reasonable person with cultural background and lived experience that would make them vulnerable. So at this point, the commission can decide, or that working group can decide, no, it doesn't meet that criteria, and just leave it out, or yes, and then refer it. Then the Human Rights Commission would refer it to the Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion to do some additional research. So the Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion would then consult with various appropriate departments, including the City of Spokane Legal and any other departments, boards, commissions, affected Native American tribes to compile any relevant information. At this point, they're required to provide any history relating to the city's acquisition of the property or any donors restrictions or requirements. And then they shift that report back to the Human Rights Committee. At that point, the Human Rights Committee will hold another public meeting inviting the requestor to present and also presenting the recommendations from the Office of Civil Rights. And in order to move their request forward, they need to vote on a resolution and forward it to the appropriate Board of Counsel. And this, and this is recognizing that we have multiple entities that own city properties, so libraries and parks, right? With the following items. So the history of the city-owned property in, in question, details in review, review process, appropriate departments to execute and anticipate the costs to implement any recommendations. I'm sure you've probably already read all of those, so I can leave that up on the screen, but this is what you would be receiving from the Human Rights Commission, kind of as a report of their process, people that they've been able to talk to and presented, and then also proposing kind of what to do with the property in question. And, and then it'll be up to you to decide what to do next. So I am wondering if you have any questions? Oh, so the next steps, getting all your feedback, and then presenting at the Human Rights Commission June first, and then, yeah.
Questions for Alex?
So can you go back a couple of slides? Yeah, right here. So when it says consult with the City, Spokane Legal, and any other department, sports, commissions, affected Native American tribes to compile relevant information. When we are talking about affected groups, I'm, I'm curious as to why the, the tribes were singled out right there and not other affected groups? Is there a reason? Am I misreading that? I don't, I don't understand. City of Spokane, Legal, any other department, sports, commissions, and then affected tribes? Is there?
Yeah. I think it was, well, it was a recommended input by Legal, but also I think it was through our experience with Westoxway, where it took over fifty years to kind of rename it, and then how do we better contribute or work together, collaborate in that space?
I was just gonna, it doesn't limit you from doing other things. It's just affected Native American tribes because they, they were the sovereigns of this area. So if it is a tribal issue, we just want to make sure that we talk with the tribes about it. But it doesn't preclude consulting with anyone else. But they're the only group that were the owners of this land and are no longer the owners of this land, I think is why it's called out.
I, I think, to me, the one that's very obviously missing are veterans. I mean, I think that's a, a group, a lot of the, the statuaries and whatnot are, are somehow related to, you know, military history, veterans, et cetera. And I think that that's something that definitely should be a part of the, the discussion on that.
And I think they're called out in Title eighteen, if I'm not mistaken.
They should be.
Yeah.
It's good feedback.
Other ideas for Alex or questions? All right.
All right.
Thank you very much, Alex. And then we had a request to bring consent item number four-point-five, which is twenty-twenty-three Annual Action Plan, component of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-four Consolidated Plan for Community Development Program HUD. And we did have some people here that were able to speak on that. So let them come down. And Councilmember Wilkerson requested to have that up, so don't know if you just wanted to jump into questions right away or?
Well, thank you. We talked about this at CHHS last week at our meeting, and there's still just seemed to be a little confusion because so many processes have changed, but we're in part of a five-year plan going forward. So I just thought it'd be great that we kind of explain it so the community understands it and the rest of the council has a better view of what this is going forward.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Kristi Jeffers. I'm not either of the people on your agenda today. I'm the new Housing Community Development Program Manager. So this is
Welcome.
Just beginning my fourth week, but staff has done a great job affording this twenty-twenty-three Annual Action Plan for approval. It is consisted with the consolidated plan. The consolidated plan was adopted in twenty-twenty, goes through twenty-twenty-four. The allocated projects within the Annual Action Plan were actually allocated and funded in twenty-nineteen outside of the CDBG cycle. So this is the final year of that five-year allocation. We hope to start a new competitive process for twenty-twenty-four. Yes?
Yeah. So on that note, one of the things, I, I have not had a chance to read through this yet, but what I'm really hoping that we can do is come together and work on something that would combine our fifteen ninety funds, the home funds, et cetera, and do something that's far more significant than any of those can be on their own in terms of, of housing and affordable housing in the community. And so, and I know our CFO has talked about doing something like this in the past, and so I'm just wondering, are those conversations that are being had, kind of where does that, where is that at right now? And?
Well, I have recently learned about those other two funds. I'll let Jen talk about that.
Thanks. Hello. Yes, there are conversations with CFO and with the Planning Department on some options. They're not ready to be presented at this time, but putting together those funds to have a larger impact is underway as far as planning goes.
However, as far as the Annual Action Plan and Consolidated Plan, they wouldn't be literally put in there because this is our application to HUD, and it includes just the funding from HUD that we have to identify how we're going to spend that. Yes.
So just going forward, because we heard from a neighborhood member at the meeting of neighborhood councils that had previously been involved in community block rep funding, they no longer feel that they are part of it, nor do they get any funding process. But just for clarity, this money has already been encumbered.
Correct.
And we're just, this is just actually a process, basically a rubber stamp to complete?
Well, if you don't mind, I'd like to give a little more than that. As I come on board, I see that we have a past, a present, and a future. In the past, seven projects were funded based on neighborhood suggestions. Those have not hit the ground. So our high priority in the present is to get those underway. They need updated budgets. All costs have doubled or tripled. So we have staff working on getting updated budgets so that we can get those out to bid and get those accomplished. The other two years that have those set-asides in, we may, we probably will come to council to approve our ability to add those funds to the twenty-twenty funds to make those projects whole.
And what is the administrative cost of the HUD funding? When we receive those grants, funds, what is the administrative cost attached to that that we can bill?
We get twenty percent for CDBG for admin, admin costs. It's different for home, ESG, and CDBG.
Yes, it is twenty percent.
Okay. And so having done this in-house, we had a lack of staff, so those things just, they dropped away. Now we're, we're staffed up, and so it's, it's a high priority focus to get those accomplished.
And that administrative cost is reimbursable, is not just
Correct.
Off the top. We have to actually do the work.
Well, yeah, it's all reimbursable.
Okay. I just wanted to highlight the twenty percent as we struggle with other administrative costs that are higher than twenty percent.
Well, and if we reduce the administrative burden, we can spread those costs over more pro, programs. Having been run the way it is, having internal staff do all of that legwork has caused a large administrative burden for those neighborhood projects. We'd like to improve that in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Stratton and Council President Bexin.
Just a quick suggestion. I'm hoping maybe you and I can touch base offline. I'm, with the CDBG funding, I'm still trying to figure out, and this is from a couple years ago, that funding for, there were two neighborhood councils. One was North Hill, and that Gateway sign that had been approved, our piece had been sent, all of that with the, the, to create the sign.
I would love to have that conversation, Councilmember Stratton, because I don't know of any CDBG funds that allow that type of activity. So we would need to, we want to think creatively.
Yeah, and we've moved on, but it's still something I want to learn from
Sure.
Because that neighborhood was, I went to all the meetings, and that funding was there, and they were going to do this, and then it went away. But there's also one other that I will find. There's one other project that that happened to another neighborhood.
Okay.
And I'll find both of those, and maybe we can sit down and just kind of talk so we understand.
I'd appreciate that very much.
Yeah.
That's, it illustrates the importance of us reviewing applications
Yes.
For appropriate and eligible costs
Right.
Right up front. We've inherited some of these. We've got some questions on them.
Good.
And we're going to still try to proceed.
Answer some of those for you. But it really was an issue where we had staff at meetings, we had people designing, we, it was full-on, and then it went nowhere.
Right. One of our conversations, one of my conversations was with one of those neighbors related directly to that sign.
Yeah. Okay. We can talk.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Want to, Council President?
First, welcome to the city.
Thank you.
It's good to see you again, Kristi. I, and I, I might be confusing programs, but my recollection back in twenty-nineteen when we did these five-year plans is that the money was presumptively awarded, but it was going to be subject to monitoring and reviewing and evaluation, and it might be renewed each year, and it might be reallocated. And I'm just wondering whether we did that or not, assuming we didn't. But I just want to make a, because that seemed like a good idea at the time, but COVID happened, all different things happened, and I don't know if that happened.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing
Yeah.
Because you might be because you might be referencing the five-year awards, which did include some CDBG service dollars, but is not necessarily reflective of the five-year plan that is the consolidated plan, although some of those funds cross over.
I, I think you're right, that I am conflating them, but my point is the same for whichever ones. That's what we promised the community and everybody, is that just because you got it didn't mean you were going to get it all five years. We were going to go back. And I'm concerned that we didn't really, either capacity or whatever happened, we didn't really go back, and so things didn't get readjusted.
Yes, and we are embarking this year on a comprehensive monitoring plan of all of the contracts that we have. So we will be able to do that in advance of the next cycle of that HHOS RFP.
And thank you, Council President. That's what I was trying to get to. Have we monitored up to this point and what has been the outcomes? Some type of reporting for accountability of that money that we have been awarded, been awarding out. So that was my concern. What is the reporting process? Are we current with the reporting process based on the money that has been allocated? I heard you mention going forward, we will have a robust monitoring program. But to date, what does that look like? Since we're in year four, and this is the last year of year five, there should be some outcomes or some assumable outcomes at the end of this current year. So we'll just be looking forward to that, or you can come back and let us know what that looks like for the money that's gone out there. Because it's, it's significant.
Yeah, absolutely. So yeah, going backwards, it's, it's going to be hard to catch up with those years that none of our staff were here during, but we're certainly reviewing and going, looking through all of that. We also have been monitored on our CDBG funds and our home funds by HUD this year already. We've been monitored by Department of Commerce, so we continue to also be monitored by our funders and have passed those.
I would like to mention that we did get four comments from the neighborhood group after visiting the community assembly, and for the most part, very positive and supportive with some really good suggestions. So we'll take those into consideration and, and improve this draft as we bring it forward to the City Council for submission to HUD.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And that concludes today's Urban Experience meeting. The next one will be June 10th.